Multi record insert, so you should just be able to um.
Okay, okay, so like you are in that if it's a put multi card insert now, so we can do it.
That's probably better.
Okay, um what else?
Can you please assign some other task also?
Sure. Okay, um, yep, Jared, you wanna go ahead and go?
Yep, so we'll go up early this morning and perform the maintenance I said I was gonna do. The modifications on the database instance, I'm checking it, um, I'm noticing. As expected, CPU usage is double of what it was yesterday because I have to see you cores. I know, John, you were looking for a um, a more accurate number on how much this modification would save. It's gonna be about, it's it would save about fourteen hundred above. And reason it's so much is because SQL Server charges by the number of CPU cores. That you use and because we're having the CPU cores, it's like an extreme cost cut.
I see. We won't really even notice a major difference, huh?
That's what I'm just gonna be really tightly monitoring today. Uh, I've been kinda looking at the performance insights, looking at Sentry, um, I saw.
You did take him down the and review like the twenty minute take downs happened this morning?
Yep.
Okay, okay, no hitches, how how long it take by the way?
It took about twenty minutes.
Okay, okay, cool, yeah, thanks, okay, what were you about to say?
Um, so one of the things that I noticed right whenever I loaded, whenever I got everything going this morning is um. There was a lot of CPU usage going from the uh, location reporting, the location ping because we do it a lot.
Yeah.
Um, that's where I kinda said, oh, coincidentally, I'm in this code. And what I was noticing is that there is a query that gets called every time you ping your location to see if it's your first location report. And that's used to do things like uh, put you in groups, like put you in nine one six events and stuff like that when you onboard. Obviously, we only need it right when you onboard or if it's your very first onboarding. So what I'm doing now is I have Redis in charge of keeping a list of users that have already reported their location. Cause what that allows me to do is that that they're in the list, I can go ahead and tell the database that I don't need to perform that check. And then the check just get skipped altogether. And that was actually like our by far CPU time, our most CPU expensive query that was being ran in the database. Because of the intervals that we have going for the location ping too.
I see.
So um, I'm just going through there, uh, there's that and there was something else. Oh yeah, for chat reactions, it was two things that I I didn't I didn't expect this to go crazy, but chat reactions. Were actually having a lot of load on database because of all, because of there was no. Indexing on the that on the chat reactions on a group. So whenever you load your chat lobby or something, one of the things that we look for is we look for the last reaction. Because that's what shows that message in that lobby, like John thinks this is totally fire. And the way that we have to do it is we have to query it by the message key and we have to query about a group key. What that does is effectively it ends up pulling like all of the reactions in that group and ends up pulling. Well, ends up pulling like all the reactions in the database and it was just like a scaling issue. Because there was no index that said basically, okay, here's the group key, give me the reactions. Without having to go through the messages first. So you had to request all the messages first before messaging all before requesting the reactions. So I added the group key as a column to the reactions table. And this actually had a huge, not only CPU uh, CPU decrease, so performance increase effectively. Also had a huge memory uh, usage decrease because we had to basically hash in the scope of that. Uh, cache it in the scope of that request, all of the reactions. And it had to like sort it and filter it in the middle and what it was doing, it was like taking ten to fifteen megabytes of memory. Every time it would do that. And when you get a lot of people that are active in it, then that ten to fifteen megabytes quickly turns into gigabytes.
Wow.
So I ended up performing that up that that modification and now it's like taking. A hundred kilo like a hundred kilobytes or something like this, it's like a crazy amount lower and like. The lobby, the lobby queries are running much more effect efficient now.
Okay.
So that's another awesome, yeah.
And and when we're talking about reducing the CPU usage, we already had extra capacity anyway, right? So it's.
Right.
It's not like it's gonna directly affect the performance necessarily, but like at least it allows to scale down more safely?
Yes, it allow it allows us to reduce the number of CPU uh, cores more safely. Cause like I didn't touch memory, memory is very important for SQL Server, so I didn't touch the memory. But I touched the CPU which we weren't using a lot of.
And where are we with memory utilization?
Uh, memory utilization, when it had about, let me see. What did we have? With the old, before I performed the uh, the change, the memory topped out at. It had, let me expand this a little bit. At our lowest, we had three gigabytes of free space out of thirty-two gigabytes, which is good, which means we have plenty of room to grow. Um, and then whenever I. Whenever I changed, dude, performed the modification this morning, uh, it flushes out the memory. Because it has to turn off the database to change the instance type. It's like right now, we're sitting like twenty gigabytes of free memory, but that's gonna fill up, SQL Server loves putting stuff in memory. So that'll 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 be.
Okay, is that the same like pricing as CPU?
No, memory is so much cheaper because Microsoft only charges on the CPU cores for server. And it's a it's like absurd amount of money.
Right, okay.
Yeah, memory, you could like load up a member like if if I could load even more memory onto this and not change the CPU cores. That would be awesome, but AWS does not allow that, they only have like predefined configurations.
Interesting.
But um, yeah.
More CPU cores for more memory.
Yeah, you have to add more CPU cores if you want more memory, but like that's not, you know.
We don't.
There's no physical limitation, it's just AWS isn't allowing you.
Gotcha, okay, but so currently everything's in the new reduced state?
Yep, everything's in the reduced state right now, um, and I'm gonna be pretty much checking Sentry. I don't see anything that that is alarming about like speed. And it looks the same as what it was yesterday, uh, I'm looking at the Sentry logs as far as like the average duration. It it's fine, I mean, we're averaging the average um, span length was, let's see. Was about fifty milliseconds yesterday and it's like at forty-five, fifty milliseconds today. So it's. It's going great, um. I think a lot of the changes we made in the past week really allowed that, um, obviously, it's gonna take. It's gonna take a traffic spike to really test it. But um, I'm really curious to see how this holds up because that, you know, it's something I've been wanting to do for like at least the past month or so.
Okay, it looks like I just came across a troll, um, I'm sending you a screenshot, you'll see. This one got past our um, AI filter also. Maybe take a look at it, how come our AR filter didn't grab it?
Where's it at?
That's a good.
That's a good question, uh.
I'll send it to you then.
I'll have to check that for the trust tips, but yeah, that's nothing to um. Nothing to remove.
And I'm curious where this user is from, like is it a out of country?
Oh, I know that name, Ukraine.
Oh, really?
Yep.
How did you know the name, have this person done other thing?
I was, I was suspicious of that user just because he has an unusual name and like, there was something that, there was something that forgot that they said and. In a chat that I was like, okay, maybe I should like look into this person. Um, I can find, I can find you real quick, let's see.
Who possesses someone to take the time to do that?
People are bored. People are, people are really bored and yeah, other things, but. Let's not say that, but they're just, let's just say they're bored.
Okay, yeah, well, um, yeah, and check into why. Are are filtered in. Okay, what else?
Let me clear out this person's trust tips, okay, that's cleared out and. Okay, yeah, I'm gonna check into that, um, the activity, uh, not the the location ping. That's something that you wanted me to check into.
Yeah.
I also, I followed up with Jeremy, I didn't hear anything from him yet. Basically like, look, I'm just trying to help in case somebody else runs into this issue. Uh, he was just, he just set up, got it working.
Maybe his user error, did you ever look at like, is he on Android, did you ever look into?
He was on Android fifteen, he was on a new phone, so like. So, nothing about like his phone, I just would like to know what it said, maybe he was out of storage, that's the only thing I could assume.
Right, man.
Is that like, he maybe he had a pending update or something on his phone that wasn't allowing him to install to install any other apps from the Play Store. But I won't really know that until I hear it from him.
Yeah. Okay, alright.
So you have checking the location thing and also, uh, did. Chantel, did you make any progress towards that like draft group flow?
No, I'll be honest, I didn't.
Okay, um, let me know when you do and I'll, I'm gonna look over it. I'm making some adjustments to the mutations that just to make sure everything's gonna support creating a group. That's only yourself.
Yep, cool.
Okay. Alright, that's um, that's all I got from mine right now.
Okay. I mean, let's get your update, um, curious how with what settings you changed with the uh.
Yeah, we sent you, so um, just the upgrade did not make the scrolling or fixed like the dropping frames issue. But there was like this, this setting, um, that's come, I I guess. It's it's still experimental, that's why it's not documented, but it's in there, it's in there. It's called like enable um, fast view render V two. So even like the name is still like, it's something new, so they're having this thing where like um. Like they somehow they change how viewers are re-rendering when like they're screen recording or like the session replays. To make it faster and um, yeah, like um, there's like this whole blog by Sentry just like seven days ago. About like this whole thing setting, so like all these optimiz- optimizations they're doing, it's new. Like they, they they're aware of the issue, like they they know it, like they're working on it, yeah. But I think it's gonna still need a lot of work, not a lot of work, but more work. Because like uh, uh, you you said like it's nearly perfect, um, and also like.
Pretty perfect, yeah?
Yeah, um, so, yeah, just just to back up that, like this, like they did a a blog. And like where they share numbers and everything, like they said like eighty percent reduction of the frame drops. So, and also someone else in GitHub, they were like, yeah, it's working perfect. But in some like, but like occasionally, again, it drops frame, it depends on the case and everything, so. I think like in most cases where we're good now, we don't have to um, worry about it.
What did, what did you mean when you said it needs, still needs a lot of work?
Like from them, like they know, because like at the end, they have this section, this is what's next position we play. And like it says like the section, while the new renderer improves the performance in a vast measure, measure of scenarios. We've already received new reports indicating specific limitation of this new implementation, so.
It is, that sounds to me like they fixed maybe the scrolling and dropping frames problem, but there may have introduced different problems, is that what they're saying?
They have limitation depends on like user case, uh, the like the cases, because here's like one of the cases like capturing each uh, HDR content. Which we don't do right now.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about that?
Yeah, we don't have to worry, and again, this is like a vast majority of scenarios, it's it's doing good, like you don't have, we don't have to. I'm just like saying like, for them to like to cover all this.
For all the. Okay, okay, but um, so how I don't, how did you find it if it's not? He says like experimental, like how did you get it?
Um, from GitHub, like they're like, uh, uh, the central, like the issues, people, the opening issues and all this in um. There's this uh, setting you need to change and like if you go to their docs, it's not there.
Huh, okay.
Yeah, uh, because it's new, like they're working on it, like they 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 got, once I think it's like they're, they're confident it's uh, it's all good. They're gonna add it to the docs, but but it's there and uh, even like.
Available in their GitHub?
No, it is available, like in the code is available, but if you wanna read on it. You will not find something like from Sentry to read on it, like it's it's scattered here in the GitHub. And there's this new blog article that just, it just did seven days ago, so it's new.
I see, okay. Okay, great, well, um, so can we implement it?
Yeah, um, yeah, like we can, we can have this in our next uh, build like um. If it's like um, working fine and everything, like uh, you just said, we're not seeing frame drops or anything, then yeah.
Yeah, seems to be, I mean, it's pretty good, like per uh, almost perfect. Like, I'm sure it could be a teeny tiny bit better, but it's hard, it's really hard to tell. So.
Yeah.
Definitely a huge improvement from where it was. Um, that's fantastic. Well, I'm glad they are working on it, so and I guess the, well, the main thing to test is session replay and I'll make sure, like are we actually still capturing? The session.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have to look for that, also like I did um, in this like build that I sent, I did uh, said they. The quality too low, so maybe the quality session replays, it's gonna be a little bit blurry.
Hmm, maybe.
Well, that that didn't change anything, uh, if like the replays were getting on uh, uh, good. Maybe we can put it back to medium and test again and see.
Yeah.
Cause medium was the default.
That's true. Um. Okay, so I could probably look at session replay now on the phone. That you did the OTA on, right? Yeah, available for everyone, cause I'm in production.
No, it's only, only for this version, the sixty-four and this version is, yeah.
Okay, okay, so only that version, then I can test it or I can check out session replay from my account and see. Okay, well, that's great, um. That was really bugging me, but I guess it'll still, the screen will still jump when messages come in, like that's not part of it.
Oh yeah, that's that's different, that's uh, definitely.
Okay, alright, well, um, other than that, what else did you have going on?
Uh, yeah, I was working on the chat, um, the two issues we were having. Like one, um, let me share, like I fixed both of them, let me showcase that, um. So one of the issue that I fixed is like is with with the um, it's like, um, what is it? It's like, yeah, I feel like somewhere in the middle of the chat and you uh, open the keyboard. It was not like keeping you where you are at, like, like I say, like the last message is this kill, so it's gonna be the last message.
Oh, you got it, okay.
Yeah, um, like keeping everything where it needs, I need to work on this a little, you see it's a little bit closer to here. That's the only change I need to do to fix. The input, it's a little bit closer, I just gonna fix that, um, but overall, and also like if you're all the way down, that was not an issue, but it's like it's there.
Why does, why did the input move lower?
Uh, the changes that I did, um, to fix that issue, I just need.
It's not gonna be also like a bit of a. Like goose chase on like in Android, cause.
No, in Android, this issue does not even exist, like when I like um, open the keyboard, things move. It does not exist in Android, it's only AI.
Oh.
Yeah. Like regardless of my changes, like the Android was working fine.
Okay, okay, um, cool, so then, yeah, what else?
Yep, th- there is this issue, there's the other issues, like uh, let me just go back in again, if you are somewhere in the middle. Here and you left the app. And you bring back the app. Like it would like drop you, jumps you all the way to the bottom.
Oh, right, right.
Right now, it's not stable, even if there's like a new message, let me now go back, like let's say like um. The last message that I see is high, it may go somewhere here in the middle. I'm gonna put back some uh, hmm, let me open it from, I'm opening now Android from another device. Oh, here's it, here's it. Send it. Now I'm gonna open the app, like nothing, like I'm gonna wait, nothing happens, but if I scroll. There's the high two.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's, uh, yeah, um, those are two. Yesterday, they're fixed, um, yeah.
Okay, well, it seems like we're getting really close, except there's gonna be tons of little problems around Lotties and there are so many and it's. You were saying though that you think once you get like one of the fixes, they'll all become easier?
Yeah, like as, as much as I'm gonna be working on it, things will be easier because uh, you'll be familiar with what's broken with the new setup and everything, so. I will be able to catch up like the patterns like very quickly when I'm just starting and the same like with the list here, like everything, um. When we start working on it, it was bugging everything, but we made some good progress here, so.
Okay, that makes sense, um, so. Wh- what else when it comes to chat, is there anything else you're looking at, working on?
Um, no, I think this is the, let me see, um, messages, um, if there's anything. Yeah, I think um, this is, like this is what we are aware of with the chat.
Okay. Okay, um, where are you gonna go next?
I'll go to onboarding with the other issues that you sent me, like now, a lot of these.
So then, yeah, then I can send over some more stuff related.
Yeah, yeah.
Not right at the moment, okay, well, it's looking really good and then you have the session replay. Here with the lower, not the lower um, quality, but.
Yep.
You you have the uh, new, the experimental version of it?
You mean here in my branch?
Yeah.
No, it's not, uh, I have to um, bring it here, but I can, it's not gonna be, also like the session replay in my branch, it's not um. Like in development is not enabled, but I get what you mean, but once we have everything there, they're gonna be merged. Like that, um, it's in a separate branch, this this work is in a separate branch. But once we're, they're all in development, it's gonna be merged, like we don't, I don't have to bring that here as well. Manually.
Okay, um, I would just add it, just in case there is some other problems that. Earlier we use it, I know you can't see it.
Yeah, uh, the session replay is not enabled here in there. By default, like we.
True, but like when you do builds, I'll I'll be able to get it.
Yeah, yeah, when we develop, yeah, sure, okay.
Okay, yeah, let's have it in as soon as possible, I wanna do a lot of testing with it since it is experimental. Okay, 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 great, then um, it's looking good, we're really good, we're really close to being able to roll this out. Um, yeah, just gotta hunt down, I'm sure there's a lot of little things, but um, I'll start paying closer attention and we probably should get. More people on these QA builds just cause. There will be so many, some of the, a lot of the Lotties, you know, they only trigger for new users and that's where it gets tricky too. Cause if we don't see it, we won't know it's a problem too, so anyway, I'll I'll start going through, but it's looking good, thank you. Okay, um, this mail, let's get your update.
Yeah, so yesterday I was busy with the whole um, tracks within. Chat, I would say the first few days I was doing the fun part and then yesterday it was kind of uh. The part that drove me crazy, it's more of like performance, why is it slow, why is this not be, it's not behaving the way I want to and um. I ended up making a few changes, so made it a lot faster and now it can handle playlists thousand plus more problem. Um, I did have to make some sacrifices, uh, nothing crazy, but remember that little. Here, I guess I'm fishing, it's gonna be easier to explain. Um. Cause after like hours and hours of. Getting it to be faster, more responsive and all that, it was still, something was still making it very slow and then. Eventually I found a problem again, it doesn't wanna add me to Google meets. Uh, yeah, I don't like it's not letting me open it online.
You might, maybe if you leave and come back, I've had that happen before.
Yeah, and I think it says on my top, this is a verifier, this is you on my email, because sorry, it wasn't, it wasn't letting me. I'm assigned in, let me try again, sometimes it just automatically logs me out. Uh, still doesn't open. Okay, well, I guess let me just explain it through words, um, you know that little play thing I had next to the track, the play icon that shows you the progress? You remember?
Say that one more time?
The the play icon next to the track that I added. Yeah, and I see I closed it with Chrome, trying again. Um, and so it turns out when we have a big. What's going on in my Chrome, oh my god. Okay, sorry about that, I don't know what what's going on in my browser. Can you open please, okay? Ah, there we go. Okay. And, okay, there we go. Um, so here, um, so if if you remember this. Thing used to be next to each one. Of like a playlist. Um, and it allowed you to basically play it from here and it would show you which one is playing. Cause it would be the only one who has like the blue circle around it and it would be the only one who has a pause button next to it. So when you have like something like this, we have like over four hundred tracks, um, you, what happens is. When you click on, when you open one of these to play it and then it updates it, they were all, that was a heavy component and it would be rendering on all of them. And it would cause like seven second delay with, and the bigger the, and if you have maybe a thousand track, it would be like a ten second delay. So I didn't know that that was a problem initially, I was, I kept optimizing, 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 still slow. And then eventually I realized that that was a problem, um, so I decided to remove it. And um, now if you click on it, you can see it's pretty fast um, to start. Now with one bug where you see a quick flicker, if you saw it there. So that flicker is the first track shows for a second and then like it's always the first track, then whatever you're playing. But um, so yeah, that's one thing I still need to fix, fix, um, but yeah, like this used to take literally seven seconds. Like when I go here and I click on this and then now see it's. Click on this and then now see it starts playing, they used to take seven seconds.
Because it was like a really long playlist?
It's, yeah, it's, it's, uh yeah, it's, it's a four hundred and sixty-two tracks.
So if it was, if it was only two tracks, it wasn't taking seven seconds?
No, it was, it was instead.
Interesting, is there, there's no programmatic way to overcome that?
I'm saying I I removed that play thing that that was causing it, now it's not doing it anymore.
But that play thing was cool, like you can't, we can't keep it there.
Worth to be honest, cuz I I've I've tried to conditionally render it, where it renders only next to the one that's playing too. But that that also, that also caused problems, selects delays, so I'll see. Uh maybe I'll, I first wanna have it working without it.
Yeah, did it originally, uh does it have controls, like you're gonna play and pause from here?
Yeah, it used to be like, like like this, you can play and pause from from there.
So, okay.
Yeah, I know, I I liked the idea too, it was cool, like I I kind of thought of it as something nice to have, but yeah, it caused me a. Lot of headaches today, a lot, like hours, hours.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, it's still works, so. Even if there was a play button, that's more static, it doesn't have to have any functionality, um.
Um, yeah, what, well, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna. Basically, um. Also, like if you have something selected like that song and then you go back, you would basically, and right now, does it show you what song's playing?
Right.
Um, but I'm gonna have like, it's gonna be like selected, maybe the background color is gonna look a little different.
Yeah, that'd be cool, or those little like equalizer bars going up and down.
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe I'd add like some kind of animation here, um indicating this is a song that's playing, so that when the user scrolling, it's easy to detect. Oh, this is a song that's currently.
Yeah.
Playing.
Right, right, okay.
So I'm probably gonna do something like that, but yes, I still need to fix this flicker thing, which was very annoying, um. And I, yeah, I need to add some kind of in in indicator that this is selected. After that, I will probably have like if that's a stable build, I would have that, I'll probably submit a review and have that for you guys to start. Testing and playing with and then if you wanna add those play buttons back, I'll see if I can somehow do it in a way where it doesn't, it's not so heavy. To compute where it it cre- creates that delay. Yeah, but yeah, that's pretty much what I've been busy with yesterday.
Okay, so it's sounds like you still have a little more uh work on it, um.
Yeah, I just need a few more last touches.
Okay, this is looking really good, I can't wait to roll this out, are you, are you running any kind of um? Long-term issues, like it's, everything seems like it's.
Uh, nothing long-term, but I do know that Expo rule, like this library is is was pretty solid for the longest time. Um, it has been a year since they've kind of introduced anything new to it.
This is an. Library?
No, it's not, it's a, it's like a community one, um and. Expo did release an audio player recently, but you, I can't, it it would, it would, it would have to be with, I mean, it's new build. On the, on the new expo, it's time to build one, on fifty-one, has to be on fifty-three.
I see.
Um, so maybe after I um, maybe after. We merge this with the other branch. Um, I'll start using the expo one to see if if it's any, if it's any better.
Do you have any reason to doubt this one, the quality?
Um, it's good overall, it's just it hasn't been maintained, so.
It hasn't been maintained for a year, is that weird?
For a year, likely, yeah, I think it's, it's been a year. Or a little over a year since, since any updates have been pushed to this library, even though it was pretty big before.
Right, right.
And it's very well documented and everything, but um.
Okay.
And the expo one is uh, well, the only thing about that is that one is fairly new. So they 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 just released that not too long ago.
If so, if you work, try and migrate to the expo library, um how much more like work? How much of your work carries over, I guess would be the best.
Uh, a good chunk, a good chunk, like I I think it'll be too crazy, I think I'll just have to change how the audio is playing, so it shouldn't be too bad. Um, but what I might do is initially we'll have this and then after the uh expo one matures or after we test it. Cuz it is fairly new, we can like switch over to it. It will, like I said, this one does the job for for us, we're not a music app at the end of the day, so it has everything we needed more. But maybe for better performance and you know, the stability and. We'll switch to the other one later.
Well, over time, things will deprecate, right?
Correct.
And no one's maintaining it. Well, um, I guess it's good for now, but.
It is good for now, yeah, and it's on, it's all, it's all, it's our only option for now until unless, you know, until we get the new expo, which which we will soon.
Right, right, okay. Well, that's great, um, anything else you wanna add?
Uh, no, that's pretty much it.
Okay, um, thank you, uh, one second. Um, okay, Wells, uh, why don't you go ahead?
Yes, sir, I'm sharing screen. Yeah, I'm working from the sofa today, so I just have one screen, so I'll have to share the whole screen cuz the emulator is in other working area. But yeah, um. Todd just uh just mentioned one of the the features he would like to have is. Uh, when you hit the add photo button, uh dislike for the trusted here. So when I hit here, it says that I have to favorite this profile to ever trusted. And uh right now I'm working on adding, when you press here, it would say the same thing for adding photos. And I don't have a question regarding this. Um, would the text like this be fine or should we say like favorite or check in into this profile to add photos?
Yeah, it could be slightly reworded like favorite the pro, favorite this profile. Before you can add photos or something like that, like so I understand, I have to favorite it before I can add photos.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be a little bit more clear, good question. What else is going on?
Yeah, so I think I noticed is for both of these. Uh, when you hit outside of the area of the. The thingy, it doesn't close the model, just when you hit the X. And I don't know, maybe just me, but it it feels a little bit weird, so perhaps like to have to click on the blue area, it dismisses the model.
I think that'd be a good touch, also probably the X is too small of a tappable area and like maybe expand.
Yeah. Actually, it seems like a nice tappable area.
Okay, good, I guess we're probably ready.
Here for example, it goes.
Yeah, that's actually fine then.
Yeah, so.
And then there was the whole functionality of adding the photo, like the whole process on his Android, it was. Like kind of letting him go through the steps, but then there was no photo added.
Sorry, can you repeat please?
When Todd was doing this process of adding, it didn't really complete the process for him, so is that, you're, are you gonna look at that part of it next?
Oh, no, I didn't have the map, but I can surely take a look at it.
Yeah, check it out, is that right, Todd, like did, didn't you have a problem where it didn't really add the photo? I think Todd might have said he's tapping away. Oh, yeah, he's getting a haircut, um. But you, yeah, try it, not when adding a favorite will add a photo, but it's the um.
Hmm, after that, right?
Yeah, after that, after you go to a profile and try and add one.
So if I go here. And try adding a photo, you're saying it won't add?
Yeah, see like you went through the steps, but then nothing happened.
Yeah, indeed, yeah, there might be something to look at.
Yeah, that would be step two here.
Okay, yeah, so um I'll finish working on this cuz the model is already here, right, if you have that favor to the profile.
Yep.
Uh, and I will add the the tap on outside here to close. And then I will work on this other part and open another PR for it.
Cool.
Yeah, yeah, so I think my updates maybe.
Fantastic, looking good, thank you, Wells, um. This is looking really good, I have a question for Amin. I mean, question for you.
Yes, sir.
So I'm really happy about this uh improved scrolling, if we um. We could just do an OTA for everybody, right, like if we wanted to do it now?
So we did update the century, so that now we can.
Wait. So, uh.
Because like, um.
You can't, you can't do an OTA on it and have the experimental scroll situation?
No, we can, because like whenever there's like a native change, either like by our side or library. That relies on native code changes something, then it's um.
It's an, it's considered, that was a native code change?
Yeah, because uh we did like uh, we did update the century library and between those versions, there were, there were some native changes.
Okay, and this experimental thing won't apply to the older century version?
I didn't check.
It would be, then we don't have to update?
Yeah, I would have to check and also we have to do a, a new build to test with it, whether this.
You could do OTA on one user's profile, like uh. You know, like Tori's, for instance, she didn't build sixty-three from the app store, like if you did OTA to her profile only?
We can do that, like the OTA, it's like for all users.
It is? I think we've done that before for just one user.
Like we had coded the users keys, we won't just testing. Well, we, uh, yeah, at that time, we're like, we had coded user keys, we're only targeting uh those users for the OTA. But I believe like, I thought like we just had OTA for every user, so.
I see, okay, so we need a new build, basically.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, well, thought I'd ask, okay, then um. I guess we could do one with some small little changes in it. Or wait for the bigger changes with the music players, let me think about that, um. Actually, now I have a question for Wells, um I think Wells was, did Todd ask you about the share button? Not working on people's profiles?
The share button not working on people's profiles, I don't think so.
No, maybe. Maybe Ismail, was that something you looked at?
You said the share button not working on people's profiles?
Yeah, if you go to another user.
Uh, no, nobody told me about that.
Okay, it might be in development, um. Okay. Well, it's not like a huge problem, but um. I don't wanna distract you from what you're doing, so could stay, stay in the music stuff, um. Let me, let me take a review, some of the little bugs that are out there, and maybe I mean, we could do some little fixes, including the century. Thing and cuz I'm kind of excited to push that out, I know a lot of people have been asking about the jumpy stuff. The jumpiness, um but I'll, I'll look at it and see how much, how valuable it would be to do that and let you know. Okay, in the meantime then, um I think that's a good place to stop for today, um. Anybody have any questions, need anything?
Yeah, um, I just remembered like this, this uh, we knew that we're gonna do a. An Android build for Wales, like where he was testing the off for Android chat off, but we didn't do the build Monday.
Hmm, that's right, I guess we could do that now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz we're in between builds for a little while, um is that something you would do or Wells would do it?
Yeah, I would, I would do the build for that, um, I will let no whales to, yeah, after next time.
Okay, yeah, let us know, put it, put a note in the development channel and then we'll have Todd and Chantel and they'll be checking, is it the thing where you like press three times on the? Version number to get the menu? Yeah, okay, so yeah, let us know and we'll test it and make sure everything's working okay there.
Okay, I'll do that.
Alright, very good, then um we'll leave it there, thanks everybody, have a good rest of the day, we'll talk soon.
Thank you all.
Alright, thank you.
Bye.
See you guys.